This is the week to flag the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's meeting to order. End of the preamble of minutes, part sixteen, twenty twenty one. Comments? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
First and second. Any further discussion of? Hearing none. On favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. First item, commissioners' reports and comments. Vice President Baker, would you begin?
I'd just like to say good morning. I'm sure everybody enjoyed the beautiful day yesterday. I know, I know I did, and I really appreciated the warm weather and the sun, so. Just a thought on the Hancock School. I know there's been a lot said, and I think a lot of people are really pulling for Hancock to remain open, and I think that the support's just overwhelming. And my thoughts are, I just hope, and this is just a thought, I hope our local Board of Education, elected officials are proactive and make a decision soon and get that off the plate before the, and I think they could do that before the report is even provided to them. There's a lot of stress and anxiety going on in the Hancock community, and I'm sure there's a lot going on in the Clear Spring community.
And Cascade as well?
And Cascade, you know, those families and those parents, they need to, you know, just get a lot of stress out of their life, and I'm hopeful that our local school board members will make the right decision and keep both of those schools open. So that, I just wanted to get that in this morning. And also, maybe John, you could help me with this. I just got a call, actually I've had a couple of calls on the, I think it's called Mills Road, I think it's Mills Road right over toward the Boonsborough area. It runs from forty, alternate forty, all the way over to Route sixty-eight. I guess they would like the county to look at that road, and they said it's been tarred and shipped several times. They've had to go back and redo the tar and ship, and they're, and they're just, they just said the road needs looked at and repaired correctly.
Okay, I'll get with staff and we'll send someone.
Okay, thank you, and that's my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Baker. Commissioner Kiefer?
Yes, sir. I have two things here. Both, I think, are rather important. One, we haven't had a discussion recently on the baseball stadium in downtown Hagerstown. I know we've been rather neutral, and I think that was the right approach to take as we saw how Senate Bill nine twenty-six came through. But recently, I think we learned that our lobbyist in Annapolis, Mr. Barianna, erroneously offered the county government's unconditional support to the legislative leadership for the baseball stadium, and in particular, that county government would go it alone after construction, and that we would be responsible for creating a self-funding mechanism. And I can only interpret that to mean taxpayers will fund that baseball stadium if it's not profitable when repairs are needed. I just wanted to take my position that I'm not opposed to a baseball stadium, but I am opposed to the taxpayers being on the hook for paying for the stadium if it's not successful. Taxpayers owning the stadium, I don't want to see that, in my opinion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, Vice President Baker.
So where did, you know where Mr. Barianna got the information to supply to the Senate President, or, yeah, the Senate President, as to how we, you know, he said that we supported the stadium and so forth. How'd he get that information?
I, I don't know how he got the information. To my knowledge, we have not had a meeting to, to discuss that or to stick that as a view.
I responded to his email and told, and forwarded it to all the commissioners and clearly stated we had not yet taken a position. I think the last Herald Bill newspaper article clearly said that we were neither for or against no position. We just wanted to wait to see how the finances would be arranged, and I think right now that's clearly where we all stand with the additional remarks that Commissioner Kiefer just stated. Anything else, sir?
The second thing I'd like to comment on, as Commissioner Baker had mentioned, there's a lot of angst in the Hancock, Clear Spring, Cascade community about closing the schools, and I think it would be good for the Board of Ed to make their intentions be known sooner rather than later. If it's not going to happen, this is worry that's not needed in those communities. And I'd like to read an editorial from the Hancock News that was recently published. And while this certainly revolves around the Hancock schools, I think you can extrapolate many things to the Cascade community as well. The editorial was published on March tenth. It says, "The timing of Washington County Public Schools' review of school enrollment in facilities is so poor that they should be embarrassed. To consider school closures and consolidations now during a pandemic and outside their ten-year facilities plan is both callous and dumb. It's callous because families and teachers, who are also taxpayers, are already under erroneous stress, enormous stress, trying to make it through another lopsided, exhausting, disoriented school term. It's dumb because what kind of real data can county officials find that will be reliable a year from now? Enrollment is skewed because of the pandemic. Community growth is in progress but slowed by the pandemic and economic difficulties. Changes in work modes now make it possible for families to relocate more easily and choose to live just about anywhere with good internet service. And real estate markets are more active now than in the last ten years. Who knows how long those conditions will last, and who knows what an economic recovery will look like in 2021? Why try to evaluate the long-term future of a community school during the most uncertain times we have had since World War Two? Elected school and county officials have to make budgets work, but there is an unprecedented amount of federal money available to help schools and government agencies hit by the pandemic, more money than the average local family will ever see. Before officials eye up small schools as a source of savings, they best take a hard look at other pots of money. They also need to weigh the position they would be putting themselves in for the long haul if they make the wrong decision to call and close a school that later may need to be reopened or replaced. The people of Hancock are hard at work. To make them see that big picture it won't stop anytime soon." I think that sums up the situation rather well.
May I make a suggestion that a copy of that be put in and attached to our minutes for the official record, too, so it'll be online and part of our minutes? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Wagner?
Good morning. I agree completely with, with Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Kiefer have said so far. I think we're missing something on Cascade and Hancock. I think we all tended to save the school. I know we did at Hancock. In, in my life in real estate, I think parts that people don't understand, the big part is the children, but the secondary part is, my life revolves around people wanting to buy and open businesses where the schools are at.
There you go.
And, and if there's no school in Hancock or Cascade, who's gonna move there, who's gonna open a business? I'm not particularly wanting to be in the business of crushing communities, and I know how this is gonna get spun. It's gonna be spun, the commissioners need to give more money, let's keep the schools open. But I clearly think that, you know, right now we're given forty-nine, the tax, we're, we're gonna be called low effort. We've been called low effort every year, and frankly, they're calling the citizens of Washington County low effort. They're the ones that are taxed to keep this open, and at forty-nine percent of every tax dollar going to the schools now, I'm not opposed to helping as much as I can, but I don't want it, the burden clearly lies to me on the elected school board officials. Let's weigh out all these opportunities. Let's not crush these schools because nobody's gonna move there. Who's gonna open a business or move to a town that has no schools? They're not gonna do it. And just a little quick research I did, Clear Spring had at least sixty-plus real estate transactions. So that's children involved there, I'm sure. I didn't do those statistics, but they tried to close Hancock, you've already put sixty more real estate transition, transactions. You know, that we're gonna have, is Clear Spring gonna be overgrown, and then we're looking three years from now to build another school like Commissioner Kiefer said. Or Smithburg's done a hundred and twenty-five transactions, real estate. You know, same thing applies there. Are we gonna overload the school, and then all of a sudden, we gotta build a school back around Cascade, especially with the potential of the Fort Ritchie being developed? That could increase a whole lot more school age children. So there's a whole lot of things going on there that, I think, you gotta really, I know they claim they have the studies and the commission and all that, but there's a lot of things that really could crush a community at stake here, not, not to mention the kids are gonna be on the buses for hours. We've heard that, and I know it's gotta be true. To the stadium, again, I agree with Commissioner Kiefer. I, I, I keep an open mind, but I, I personally don't wanna own a stadium. I personally don't want to upkeep a stadium with taxpayers' money, and, and we have a building, it sits right there about, probably around Home Plate somewhere, one of those areas down there, that would cost, just guessing, three or four million dollars to relocate it. We can relocate it that easily. So that's another, that's another concern I have. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. I wholeheartedly agree with just about every statement each and every one of you made. It is a difficult choice to close schools in a community, and I agree with my commissioners and support that every effort to keep those schools and all those locations open. It's, I know in nineteen sixty-eight, when the old, old Williamsport High School was going to be torn down for the construction of the new Williamsport High School, which is now over fifty years old, I remember the excitement and the joy of our community having a brand-new school, and some of the folks from the other areas being brought in, and the friendships and the families that all were brought together because of this school. Coach Glenn Smith, Coach Stalfur, Mr. Price, Mrs. Waldron, Glenn Smith, Mr. Waddle, those memories of those teachers in my home school were very important. So I wholeheartedly encourage our local school board to keep those schools open. In regards to the ballpark and some of the statements, I think the commissioners have been very fair and reasonable, trying not to take a position. In our last meeting with Senator Quarterman and others, it was clearly stated in the paper that we weren't taking a position. We were waiting for more details and facts on how the finances would be arranged. I have to agree, I do not support the county owning or putting any other taxpayers' dollars into that project. If it's successful and can make money, good, congratulations. Let private business own and operate that stadium. In regards to the building on Baltimore Street, our permits building, you'd think by now we have been contact, would have been contacted with some type of preliminary offer that often takes place in real estate, that if you're proposing a project, we'd have some type of idea on what the price was going to be and where we're going to be located. At this time, when contractors pull up to that Baltimore Street location, they may be pulling a trailer, be in their work truck, so there'll be unique conditions set forth for a new location. So I think anything, we should at least have been beginning in negotiations on what the cost and price of moving that building. Again, I wholeheartedly support not having a position at this time, waiting to see the finances. If funding can be arranged to fully fund a stadium, great, congratulations behind that, but I do not support our local tax money, tax dollars from our taxpayers supporting that stadium in the future. Two other items before we begin our agenda. I attended an event on Saturday for a veteran-owned business called Jade Dog Junk. The guy was a Iraqi war veteran with, opening up a veteran-owned business. Congratulations and much success to him. And yesterday, I attended the opening class ceremony for thirty-three firefighters at our academy. Best wishes to all those recruits and people who are gonna be dedicated to protecting our community. With that being said, that'll end my comments, and we'll go to staff comments. Krista, any staff today?
I believe Dave Hayes had something to say.
Okay, if Mr. Hayes, you're listening, please come in.
Good morning. Wanted to take a couple of minutes here this morning. And Clark, I have a copy of what I'm gonna speak to, so you don't have to try to keep up. But to take a few minutes to brief you on the hiring initiative, I heard President Klein just speak to, and the beginning of the firefighter recruit academy. So recruit class one, as you just heard, began yesterday, and it will last approximately ten weeks, ending around May twenty-first, with the academy graduation shortly thereafter. We'll begin recruit class, recruit class one with actually thirty-one firefighters and firefighters' paramedics, and of those, twenty-six are firefighters, five are the firefighter paramedic captains. Just to give you a quick glimpse into what we're able to pull, because remember, we're not hiring people or firefighters that don't have previous training. They have that. You now are employees of twenty-five firefighters that are firefighter twos, twenty-six new EMTs, eight additional ALS providers, four of those came from within the county, twenty-seven pump operators, and these are all in the thirty-one people, eleven aerial operators, twenty-four rescue techs, eleven hazardous material techs, seven confined space techs, and five swiftwater techs. Out of all of those, only two do not have all of the primary job description requirements. We will be working to fill those either through the academy or shortly thereafter that with details. We're going to begin a second academy, which will be recruit class two, just after completion of the recruit class one. That academy will accommodate the fulfillment of the remaining seven firefighters and two captains that were approved under the regional staffing plan. We believe that we can actionize placement of firefighters and firefighter paramedics in all the regional stations to include the firefighter and firefighter paramedics for both Hancock and Roarkville. There will be limited leave impact capacity for the first ten weeks until completion of recruit class two. So we'll likely need to use some overtime and things like that, but with the delayed hiring of the staff, we should have that capacity in our existing budget. We'll also need to detail after completion of recruit class one and two, some of the firefighters to fill in some of the blanks, to build the cadre up, to add additional special operations strength. So in wrapping up, I just wanna recognize all the staff from the Division Emergency Services team and other county staff who weathered many storms to keep this hiring initiative on track and on time. Special recognition I would like to put out is deserving the following DS staff and also county staff. In the Division Emergency Services, Director Lewis, Captain Sharon Hardsock, Eric Yates, Programs Administrator Sonia Hoover, Administrative Assistant Bonnie Keltner, and Firefighter Tech Dave Olson. And Human Resources, certainly the NRM HR Director Deb Condo has had her hands full with us. Human Resources Coordinator Krista Shipley, HR Recruiter Michelle Dwyer, and Benefit Coordinator Brittany Rice, or Price, I'm sorry. And then the Officer Budget and Finance is the Chief Financial Officer Sarah Greaves, Budget and Finance Director Kim Edlin, Accounting Supervisor Daryl Brown, Payroll Supervisor Stephanie Baker. And then certainly our county leadership team, County Administrator John Monarano, and County Attorney and former County Administrator, interim administrator Kirk Downey. And then last but certainly not least, I wanna thank you, the Board of County Commissioners, for your unwavering support of public safety in Washington County. While there's certainly more work to do, you've taken a huge step to ensure the sustainability of public safety throughout the county, and we appreciate your efforts.
Dave, I was, when I was out yesterday, I have to commend your staff. I mean, it was very well organized. It was like clockwork. You walk in, everybody had their desk, if you saw in that last picture, had all their gear, a lot of their gear, and not all their gear, but they had things that spout up on their desk with their names on it, and, and I guess Dr. Clobber's been very cooperative in this.
College has bent over backwards to the fullest extent they can, and certainly I missed that in this, but I wanna extend the sincere recognition and appreciation to the Hagerstown Community College, also to the Hagerstown Fire Department for the use of their training center as we move through the physical agility testing, and then our neighbors to the East Frederick County Department of Fire Rescue, who has extended use of their public safety training center for the practical evolutions of burns and, and those types of activities. So we're very fortunate here. We've got good friends and neighbors, and that has helped us move this forward. And, and as you spoke, I would be lying if I told you I wasn't a little nervous prior to yesterday morning, but I knew on Friday what it looked like, and I felt great yesterday morning standing there and watching it, and I could sense the pride in the room for what they had achieved.
And didn't you lose a couple instructors at the last minute?
We did, and we had, we've had challenges throughout the, the entire planning process in, in getting to this point, and that's why I felt it was important to recognize some of these people by name, because all of those had an absolute determination that we would not fail. Now, we still have ten weeks to complete the academy, and I understand that, but I think yesterday morning, as you, Commissioner, had stated, and I think the cadets would agree, it was a well-represented, a well-planned class, and I think we're gonna make this through, and we're gonna do okay. So again, remember, we had very limited staff to pull this off, but, you know, I'm very proud of the work they did.
Thank you, Director Hayes.
Appreciate it.
Commissioners, any comments, thoughts, sir? Thank you. Krista, continuing with staff comments. Anyone else scheduled?
That's all I have.
Okay, Krista, would you have anything today? Mr. Downey, would you have any comments today?
No comments today.
Administrator John Monarano, any comments today?
Just, just a few. Thank you, President Klein. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
First thing I wanna do is I wanna thank our water quality employees for addressing and repairing a forced main break that occurred on Sunday afternoon down in Westfield. They went down, took the station offline. There was no sewer service interruption for that community. They actually were hauling some of that during the evening, and they successfully repaired it yesterday. So I wanted to thank them for taking care of that. Just a few things. The mass vaccination site, as you know, will open on this Thursday, so, and obviously, the governor's gonna be opening it up more and more over the next few weeks, so they're gonna start out slow at the mass vaccination site and then, then ramp up. So citizens who wanna be vaccinated that have not been vaccinated, this is, there's gonna be an opportunity in the next, next three to four weeks to do that. I did see Governor Hogan was gonna have a press conference today at two-thirty to make additional COVID-nineteen vaccination announcements. I'm not sure what he's gonna talk about, but I just wanna let you know that was, that was happening today. And the last thing, we've talked about it here, I just wanted to personally welcome the candidate, the candidates at the Fire and Training Academy. I had the pleasure of being out there yesterday to welcome them. It's a good group. It's exciting, and I just wanted to personally welcome them to county government. That's all I have.
Thank you.
John, there's mass vaccination sites, and someone goes to get vaccinated, what information do they have to provide?
First, an appointment, correct?
I'm sorry?
You have to have an appointment first, correct?
Right, you're gonna have to have an appointment. So right now, I think they still have the pre-registration site up and running, so people go on and pre-register, and then when they become eligible, they'll be contacted to actually set up an appointment. As you know, I think it's today, sixty and above are now eligible for the vaccine. And I think next week, I think it goes to, I think it's sixteen and above with, with pre-existing conditions, and then I think the next week it's fifty-five and above. So everyone should, you know, look online. They do have a centralized pre-registration site for those mass vaccinations. And as I said, they're gonna start off slow. I don't exactly know the number, but they're gonna start out slow here in Hagerstown, and then ramp up very quickly as the vaccinations become available. That's, I mean, that's, that's the, the issue that they're gonna continue to face. The, more and more people are gonna be eligible, but until we get more vaccines, it's still gonna be a slow process.
John, I might also add to that, if someone is eligible, not because of their age, but because they work in a designated employment category, they may need to bring proof of where they work and what they do, maybe an employee ID card if they work for an education.
Correct. You're correct.
Yeah, I, I saw registration link to answer Terry's, where you pre-register, then they call you for appointment. I, I don't know if the PR, maybe we could ask them, they, they might have already done it, to put it on our site, that link. I saw it once, and then I haven't seen it since.
Okay, we'll follow up with that. It may, it may be on there already. I mean, they've been following up, and I think the, the notices that they've been sending out from the Joint Information Center has included a lot of that information, but we'll make sure that we make that available to anyone who, anyone who needs it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, no more staff comments. Hearing none. We'll begin with requests for reallocation of capital improvement projects. We'll welcome Jeff Prue, and I think I saw Dr. Michaels and Mr. Owens there. Please introduce yourselves in the matter, please. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. On behalf of the Board of Education and the school system, I am here this morning to request the capital transfer of project funding in the amount of three million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, which constitutes the balance of the funding for the Sharpsburg Elementary School project and the balance of the, the commissioner's funding for the urban improvement project to be reallocated to capital maintenance to support planned maintenance projects within the school system. Specifically talking about the projects in relation to the, to the new Sharpsburg Elementary School. That project did come in under budget. The money that is requested to be transferred was part of the 2021 four-million-dollar capital improvement project budget from the commissioners, and we would seek to apply that funding to the local match of other projects that are currently funded by the, by the Interagency Commission on School Construction. As it relates to the urban improvement projects in history, in early 2017, the public school system, the Board of County Commissioners and others signed a multi-party agreement for the urban improvement project, of which the commissioners provided four million dollars towards the project, and the Board of Ed provided four million dollars to the project. And this is specifically relating to the urban educational component, which is the addition to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, which is now the Vincent Roth-Gro academic center. During the phase, during the course of, of committee meetings and, and planning and designing, I think the committee realized that funding was not available to complete all of the projects. The Board at that time, in consultation with the team, including at that time Senator Sarafini, requested to the Interagency Commission on School Construction for state funding on that project. With some additional support from the senator, also from the governor's office, the IAC did provide ten million dollars towards that project, which is really what really was the grease to let the, the rest of the project keep rolling. The Board of Education had two and a half million dollars allocated to it from the governor's bond bill. A million and a half of that was then not used and was allowed to be used by other partners on the project. And as a result of, of successful design and, and value engineering, the Board is under budget on that project, and we are requesting that those monies be transferred to capital maintenance projects. And I think as a, as a point of note, the transfer of capital money from large projects has typically been approved to capital maintenance by the Board of County Commissioners, so I think this is a, a standard request on the part of the Board. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
What's, you may have mentioned it, but what's the breakdown on each school? Barbara Ingram School was, and then what was the Sharpsburg amount?
Yep, so the...
Just the county portion?
The county portion of the UIP is one point, so I'll, I'll read it full out, one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. It's exactly half of the remaining allocation between the Board and the commissioners, and the Sharpsburg project is, is in the remaining. It's about two-point-five million dollars. I believe, actually, you have a breakdown in your packet. I think Sarah Greaves provided the county's transfer document, so the Sharpsburg amount is actually exactly two million, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars.
John or Sarah, where is our portion of this money sitting right now?
Our portion, I mean, it's, it's in the county's possession right now. On the Board of Ed, we're trying to review what's been being funded, probably the county's, the allocation that we need to be some way or another.
Understood, thanks.
Commissioners, any more comments or thoughts?
Commissioners, if it's okay, I would like to suggest that we hold off on this for the time being as we go through our budget process. We're close to finalizing our budgets. I know the Board of Ed is close to finalizing theirs. I'd just like to wait a little while. That's okay.
Commissioners, your thoughts on that?
As we go through the budget process.
Dr. Michaels, please speak, please, sir. Come forward.
I mean, I would ask the county commissioners to make a decision today. We're, we have a gigantic funding matrix we're trying to sort our way through. We obviously have some federal money, just like the county has federal money. We're trying to shift and determine how to stretch and fill in our gaps in our general fund budget, our capital budget, our long-term capital budget, how to best utilize our federal funding. I mean, these are two big dominos of what's gonna happen. This is gonna determine whether we have north high turf or not have north high turf. So these are dominos we need to fall today, one way or the other, even if it's no. I'd rather know that today than to find out anything different. The county's up eighteen-point-two million in funding this year. I don't understand what it is to wait for. I don't know, understand what else is gonna come in. I would hope that you would find this favorable. This has happened year after year after year on these projects, since there's been balances. We've been able to stretch We've been able to stretch those over into other capital projects. And these are two very important dominos to me that I need to understand what's going to happen, because if you're going to not provide this money, I've got to shift money from somewhere else to make sure that the projects that need to be funded are funded. And it causes other cuts, and it causes other shifts in what we're doing. So, we need to know, unless there's some real reason to wait, that the answer would be yes some other day. If the answer's no today, we obviously would be willing to wait on a yes answer. But if you know that you're voting it up or voting it down today, we'd appreciate an answer. Really, we're soon approaching April, and we have to start making decisions on some of this budgeting effort.
Commissioners, if I can add, in relation at least to the Sharpsburg funding, that two and a half million was part of the FY21 $4 million towards capital projects approved by the IAC. So, we have other projects, for instance, the HVAC replacement at Smithburg High School, the roof project at Western Heights, and the chiller replacement at North Hagerstown High School, that if we don't have that money, those projects are unfunded, and they don't get done. This money completes the funding for those projects, and it was in your FY21 budget. We're not asking for new money. We're asking for the reallocation to handle capital projects that need to be done. The HVAC system is original to the building at Smithburg circa 1967. The chiller is failing. We rebuilt it several years ago at North High. It would ultimately be a reduction of your FY21 budget and capital to the Board of Education if you deny this transfer on Sharpsburg.
Commissioner Kiefer, you still okay waiting?
I am, sir.
Is there anybody else in agreement with Mr. Kiefer to wait?
Yeah, I'll wait. I don't think we're looking to deny. I want to at least have a discussion with our CFO and...
Yeah, I think we're just going to wait. We're not saying no. All right. Commissioners, y'all on agreement? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, school mitigation, Claggett's Mill. I believe Jill Baker. Jason, is this one Tim Long's coming in on to?
No, he'll be in on the... Yeah, it's Jill and Baker.
Jill Baker coming in.
You're stretching already?
Yeah.
Terry, can you? I started writing down. The road that you referred to in your comments, what was the name of that road?
Mills Road.
Mills Road, okay, that's, I can't read my own handwriting, so I appreciate that.
M-I-L-L, not M-E-L.
Yep, I got it.
Hope you'd like to wipe down your station just to be safe. Good morning, everyone. Jill, when you're ready, please introduce yourself, your guest in the matter.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. With me today is Jason Dybelbis, Council for Claggett's Mill. As you know, the APFO, or Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, is the local regulatory instrument that we use to ensure that public facilities and services needed to support new development are available concurrently with the impacts of new development. In this specific case, we're here to talk about impacts upon school capacity. Claggett's Mill, Section 2, is a proposed 100-lot subdivision located on the south side of Poffenberger Road, east of Sharpsburg Pike. It's located in the Rockland Woods Elementary, E. Russell Hicks Middle, and South Hagerstown High School school districts. Based upon the latest available data that we use to compute school adequacies, Claggett's Mill, Section 2, surpasses the local rated capacity at all three school districts. Typically, those developments that exceed the LRC may still move forward with their project by using the alternate mitigation contribution to mitigate their impacts. However, the APFO limits that mitigation method for developments that do not exceed over 120% of the state-rated capacity. In this specific case, the school seats needed to serve this new development would exceed 120% of the state-rated capacity of South Hagerstown High School. Therefore, the developer has submitted a proffer mitigation in the amount of $334,530 to the Commissioners to abate the needed mitigation. Just to note that all the funds that have been collected over the years through this alternate mitigation contribution are deposited into a designated account specifically for school construction costs. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to Commissioners for any questions, comments, or discussion related to this offer.
Jill, I do have a question. You said this goes beyond 100, this will put the schools beyond 120%? Are they currently at 120% capacity?
With the APFO, the way it stands, without this development, they are under the 120% threshold. Can't remember exactly where they're at.
So, how many students are they going to potentially, whatever the formula is you use? So, how many students will be, this development will make how many, these schools, how many students beyond 120%?
So, this development will create 22 new students, and I believe we calculated that would be seven or eight students over the 120% capacity.
At all three schools?
No, just at South High.
Are those figures, what's the latest accuracy of those figures?
Those are based upon development through permits through December 31st of 2020.
I mean, as far as this being over student population, because a lot of children went to private schools through this, so is that a little accurate?
Yes. The numbers, the enrollment numbers affected by COVID, we have analyzed those numbers. We are using December 2020 calculations for this formula. As it turns out, the most affected schools are the elementary schools, as you would expect, with daycare, homeschooling, things like that. High schools have been relatively unaffected by the COVID numbers. According to our calculations, based upon enrollment numbers provided by the Board of Education between June 2020, which was the end, basically the beginning of the COVID situation, through our most current numbers, which is December 2020, they've actually gained 13 seats in the high school level total. So, we've not lost any enrollment in the high school.
I don't know. I just sort of questioned those figures, because, you know, everybody talks to their kids going to private school, they're homeschooling. And we're not, to the point, I don't think we're overloading the school. That's just my, I just don't know how up to date, how accurate that is, because all you hear is classrooms now are, you know, there are people in, the private schools are full. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying, are we really overloading? Are we a couple percent over? Not that, you know, the fee is fine, but I don't think if we're only a couple over, you know what I'm saying?
I can only base my figures on...
Well, yeah, you got the figures. I don't, but I just, I was just curious how up to date they are.
They are current to December of 2020.
Commissioner Baker, you have a comment?
I'm just going to, you know, comments that I've received from the community, the South High is busting at the seams. I have heard that. But what number and what busting at the seams means, I have no definition of that. I guess my other question would be, so based on the numbers of overcapacity under the old APFO agreement, what would that dollar amount be? Maybe Jason, somebody.
So, the old APFO agreement for Claggett's Mill was $21,000 per lot. And so, that was a whole different structure. All right, so that was...
I meant, I'm sorry, I meant per student. So, if she's saying that they're going to generate 20 kids, wasn't there a, under the old APFO, wasn't it based on a student versus, oh, it was based on a lot?
Yeah, so the old 2007 agreement was based upon a per-lot number. That obviously is, basically, it's an antiquated system that we have with a whole different time period. So, the AMC, the AMC is when it transitioned to then be more of a per-student impact when we sort of got into the granular level of analysis there.
So, that's 334,000 that they're mitigating? How many, what number of students would you divide into that? I want to get a per-student call.
Their proffer would be $3,345 and some change per lot. So, divide that by 22 students.
The AMC calculation is what takes into the pupil, the per-seat capital cost, and all those other variables that have previously...
So, if you're saying 20 students, to me, it makes sense to divide the 20 into the 334. But you're saying you want to do it per lot. I don't underst... Yes, what I'm having trouble understanding, if a lot is going to produce a half of a kid on average, well, obviously, that's...
The pupil generation rate is .22, so it's about a quarter per lot.
So, here's how we come up with the alternate mitigation contribution. It is, the average cost of a school seat right now is $41,198.55 per student, based on a lot of different variables that we throw into that. That's what we expect it to cost per seat to build a new school, and it probably is a little bit more than that now. We then take that number and we divide it by the average life expectancy of a school. At this point, that number is 50 years. We then multiply that number by the average pupil generation rate for that development. In this specific case, that number would be .29. What we do is we average the pupil generation rate for the different elementary, middle, and high school pupil generation rates to get the .29. We then multiply that number by the total number of years that a student is expected to spend in that school, which the Commissioners recently raised to 14 years. That would include a pre-K year in those numbers. That gives us a per-unit number of, for single-family homes, $3,345.30 per home. We multiply that then by the number of units that are being proposed. In this case, it would be 100, so we have a nice round number of $334,530 being proposed. That would be the typical payment that we would accept to allow projects to move forward if they were under this 120% threshold capacity. The APFO simply states that once it exceeds that 120%, they can no longer just directly use that. They have to come talk to the Commissioners first to discuss whether or not additional mitigation would be needed. So, that is what we're here for today, is to discuss whether or not the Commissioners feel as though additional mitigation would be needed because the additional 100 units from Claggett's Mill would then exceed the 120% state-rated capacity as prescribed by the APFO.
Well, using those calc, I'm going to complicate this. Using those calculations, what would be the additional money? By using the calculations you just went through?
There would be no additional money. That would just be what the alternate mitigation would be if they were below the 120%.
And this money goes into account with the county?
Yes.
And the county monitors this for the Washington County Public Schools?
Yes.
And that money can only be used to build a school? Can it be to repair a school?
It goes into a capital fund, and there are, I understand there are limitations to that. If you want more details, I believe Sarah Greaves, CFO, is here with us. She could elaborate on that more if you'd like.
I mean, I guess a yes or no answer. Do you have to build a school, or is there other ways you can use that money if you're to Washington County Public Schools? Not put a roof on or a turf field.
What about in addition or an outside classroom?
Okay.
They wouldn't use it for portable classrooms?
I think you probably would.
Well, I mean, I can chime in here. I think the excise tax, I know in particular, has more guidelines as to how the funds are spent. And these APFO mitigation funds, I think, are a little bit different. I don't think there's as many constraints in the ordinance itself. Obviously, you know, you guys set the policy as to what you do with it, but the excise tax has that, I think it's, I forget what percentage is, but it has that designation in there that it is to be used for specific capital.
Yeah, Sarah explained to me...
This one's a little bit different.
Yeah, Sarah explained to me before the meeting that, I'm going to correct me, $350,000, $345,000-ish dollars are allocated out to the Board of Education in their capital budget via excise tax funds. So, you have kind of two pots of money here, one to help with annual capital costs and one to kind of set aside for big-ticket items, like building a new school.
I personally would be fine with it, only for one reason, one reason at all. With all the new industry coming into Washington County, they're going to have to have a place to live, and these are... I know inventory's so low in Washington County now, I don't want the people coming here to work living in another county, whether it be West Virginia. I want them to stay in Washington County. So, that's sort of my logic going up there.
If I can add some additional context to that, I think that's a good point. You know, I want to go back, sort of in the wayback machine. Claggett's Mill started off back in 2004. This is the same Claggett's Mill that's been in and around for a long time. It started off at 238 homes. It went up to 264. It's come back down to 148. What we're talking about here is the final 100. There was 47 of the 48 in the original phase that had been built out, so they're pretty much done. So, we're talking about 100 additional units in a project that at one point was going to be 264. So, it's already come drastically down from prior years. The other thing is that this project came before you in 2019 to ask that the previous APFO agreement be, you know, rescinded so that they could, this particular developer then purchased the project. They then developed the project, so all the infrastructure is done. The roads, the water, sewer, it's done. They're ready to start building homes. When they came and asked you to get rid of that old agreement, they were under the impression at that time, based upon the projected numbers at that time, that the AMC, this 3,345 per lot, was their route. There was not going to be an issue. The projections were all pretty modest on the schools. And then something happened between 19 and 20, not just with the enrollment at South High, but with the pipeline. So, what contributes significantly to why we're sitting here today is what's referenced in the APFO is the pipeline enrollment. And that's basically the projected kids coming from previously approved subdivisions that have not yet been built. So, they're approved, but they're not built, so the kids aren't yet in the school, but you can see them coming on the horizon. When Claggett's got their preliminary plat approved for these 100 lots, that pipeline enrollment was 59. As we sit here today, it's up to 127. So, the amount of units that have been approved in the last 18 months, primarily in Westfield, Hager's Crossing, and Rosewood, I believe, are the big needle movers here. That's the reason why it's, South High is being projected at over 120. And it's, it's a less than a 1% overage, which as Jill mentioned, is, we roughly estimate, that's about eight kids. So, even with all these projections, we're still not talking about a huge sort of margin over the 120. But that background, I think, is critically important. I'm not aware that any other project has gotten sort of stuck, like this one has, between a preliminary projection at preliminary plat and then a final projection at final plat that is so drastically different as to cause it to get stuck here. When I've been here before with you guys, we've done this in advance for projects just coming in to get their approvals before they build the infrastructure. This is not that case. This project is built with homes ready to come out of the ground, and it's gotten stuck. and has gotten stuck between the preliminary, which was okay, and the final, which is just barely over. So I think that's an important context to keep in mind. The other thing I, I, I referenced in the letter that I submitted back in January proposing this is that, you know, I don't mean to open up a can of worms with sort of countywide discussions over redistricting and the like, but of all the high schools in Washington County, South High is the only one at this level. So based upon the current enrollment as of December of twenty, Smithsburg's at eighty-one, Boonsborough's at seventy-nine, Williamsport's at eighty-three. I think North is in, in the, in the nineties. So South High is definitely unique with this particular impact. There seems to be room in these other districts. Again, I don't want to go there and say that that's the solution, because with that comes a whole different set of complicating circumstances. But we seem to have a bit of a unique situation here with South with presumably it's caused by the development trend. Again, primarily those projects of large size, the West Fields, uh, Rosewood, and Hager's Crossing projects. So it's, it's a bit of a unique circumstance here. Um, and we would, you know, on behalf of the developer, we would just ask that the commissioners exercise their discretion to approve this offer so that this builder can get out there and get going. They would start tomorrow if they could. I mean, we, we pay that check and we'd get rolling and start adding these homes to the tax base.
You know, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to accept the developer offer for mitigation of school capacity for Claggett's Mill, Section Two Development.
There is a motion on the floor to accept. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second for more discussion.
Thank you. First and a second discussion, please.
Jill, how this process works, because the school's capacity is greater than one hundred and twenty percent, they have to come into us for further discussions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you said? Do those discussions, can they involve negotiations of, of additional money? Is that the, the premise of this?
It's your discretion at what you want to do, yes.
Okay. The three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-dollar amount, that was based off of our county's own, own formula.
Correct.
Which we recently increased to include pre-K, so that, because we added another level of schooling, that increased that dollar amount as well, correct?
Yes.
Has an issue like this come before us in the past where we negotiated a different dollar amount? How, how rare of an occasion is this?
This is the first time we've had this situation under the new policy of having the alternate mitigation contribution.
What would the previous dollar amount before the alternative minimum contribution have been? Instead of three hundred and thirty-four, what would that value?
It has varied over the years. Um, it has gone anywhere from, I think it started at seventy-five hundred dollars per unit, then it increased to eighty-five hundred, then it increased to-
What, what would the total been in twenty eighteen? That kind of what you're getting at? Not the formula, but what would have been the total amount? This was twenty eighteen instead of twenty twenty-one?
The alternate mitigation contribution came into play in twenty fourteen. Prior to that, um, it was negotiated usually on a case-by-case basis. Um, the hundred and twenty percent did not play in here. It was just if you exceeded the state rated capacity or the local rated capacity, you would have to negotiate some formula, and that, that varied dramatically. Um, that was, that was one of the ones that Claggett's Mill came in and we just rescinded. So you could go anywhere from twenty-two thousand dollars per lot. I think we went the whole way down to seventy-five hundred dollars per lot. That was kind of the purpose of this AMC was to try to take out that uncertainty for developers and make our methods as consistent as possible, so that now that, you know, we're exceeding a larger capacity, then yes, that's, that's to bring it to your attention to say, hey, there's an alert here, we have an issue. How would you like to handle that? Do you think more money would handle that? Um, and if so, what that number would be, and that's entirely, you know, up to the commissioners to decide.
Do we have the option to also, I, I know this project has been years under development. Do we also have the option, in addition to an additional dollar amount, to put a timeline on it? Because if other developments start to take place throughout the South Hager Center High School, School District, for example, that one hundred and twenty percent, one hundred and twenty-point-seven percent number could only go higher. Could we put a timeline on it to say, we, we will offer this to you at this amount, but you have to build and have your development done by a certain deadline? Is that possible?
Jill, before you answer that question, do you know how many, I'm sorry, do you know how many other developments are in the pipeline for the Southos, Hot, the South High School District that's going to add uh large numbers of student students?
There is one development right now that is moving forward fairly rapidly, and that would be Hager's Crossing. However, that is in the city, and they have no APFA requirements, so that would continue to move forward. In the county, um, I don't believe-
So, so, so Hager's Crossings, as that moves forward, that they won't have to mitigate?
No, they do not. So I believe in the county, um, we have at least three developments that are in a very, very draft preliminary concept form uh that are interested in moving in down there. I don't think we have anybody ready to shovel-ready at this point, no. We do not. Um, to come back to Commissioner Kiefer's question. Um, the APFO does allow, and there's a statement in there about limiting um the number of permits per year, if you'd like to do that. Um, I think-
Good, I'm listening to you.
Um, I think that you could absolutely put a sunset clause on this. I mean, this is the negotiation that you're talking about. If you wanted to put a sunset clause, the only caution to that that I would put is that you're then um allowing other developments to continue that have already paid the AMC and still continuing to put students in the school without that same sunset clause. So to be completely fair, um, it, it's something that can happen, but I, I don't know how consistent that would be with other developments that we're talking about.
Commissioners, are there any more questions?
Yeah, uh, in this, in this part of the roulette format?
Um, yes.
One of the property stands with roulette drive address.
Yes.
Are the roulette still involved with this project, or they've already, it's all?
Okay, if there's, there's a first and a second, if discussion's over, I call for a vote to, to accept. All in favor, all in favor to accept? Say aye, all in aye. Four oh, thank you very much.
Jill, I don't need to go down a rabbit hole during our meeting here, but could you give us more information when the city has no APFO?
Uh huh.
How that um affects us when we plan for the school?
Yeah, that's an important question.
Would you like me to bring that back to you in another discussion? Is that what you're asking?
Or, or just send an email?
Or your email, so we can know.
If you could just provide that information to the commissioners, and we want to have a further discussion, we can do that after you get the preliminary information.
I'll come back for that one, too.
All right, everybody.
I got thoughts on that one.
I was gonna say, yes, you can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Jill. Thanks, Jason.
Yes, thank you.
How will the cost of materials affect the development of this uh development?
Challenging.
Challenging.
I was out at Lowe's yesterday, a sheet of OSB, just a four-by-cheat, thirty-nine dollars.
How much?
Thirty-nine dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
He was like, ten, about ten bucks, or?
A two before, eight foot long, eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I've talked to some, some builders that are now having trouble even getting it. Sounds like it's become a price issue. Now it's really turned into a supply issue as well, so it's, it's very concerning. Because there's a lot of, um, the big scale builders that are just buying in mass quantity and just gobbling the entire supply.
It's gonna slow down construction.
Okay, everybody, next agenda item will be the express approval, town of Smithsburg. Thank you, Mr. Dogless, Jill. Thank you. Mr. Cross, you, uh, good day to you. You may want to wipe down your area just to be safe if you, there's some-
From, from him?
Yeah, you never know.
Sir, that's a-
Shaky JV law.
Oops. It's a very good idea.
Thank you for your cooperation. Okay, again, good, uh, or good morning still, everyone. Uh, our agenda item now will be the express approval, town of Smithsburg annexation. Joe Baker, will you introduce yourself, your guest in the matter, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Klein.
Jill, before you get started to cross, I just confirmed the live feed is up and running.
Okay, so I have Rich Heddington, mayor of Smithsburg, uh, on my cell phone saying he can't see, and I have Bruce Dean and, uh, my attorney and, uh, saying they can't see, so.
Well, the, the live, the live feed's running, and actually, commissioners, just so you know, the live feed is right there in front of you.
Thank you.
That's the live feed, so I just confirmed with our staff that the live feed is running.
Okay, thank you. I'll begin at your convenience.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Um, my name is Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. Joining me here at the table is Mr. Daniel Cross, um, owner and developer of Cloverly subdivision in Smithsburg. Um, presented today is a request to grant express approval of a development that has been annexed by the town of Smithsburg um that has been assigned a zoning designation substantially different than that of the county zoning. The town of Smithsburg has recently approved annexation of two parcels located at one-two-two-one-four and one-two-two-zero-five Cloverly Lane with a combined total of one point five-seven acres. The current county zoning of the two parcels is residential transition, and the town has applied a zoning of, of general commercial. As it, as the two titles of the zoning districts sound, the county zoning currently only permits only residential uses, while the town zoning will allow only commercial uses. While the town, while the two zoning districts um are acknowledged by all parties as being significantly different, there is some context that needs to be taken into account. These two parcels are loca- are intended to be combined with the larger Cloverly development that was previously annexed by the town, and I think you'll see that in some of your included information that Mr. Cross has provided. Um, the zoning assigned by the town uh to the two parcels is consistent with their overall development plan, with the town's overall comprehensive plan, and that being contemplated by both the town and the developer. So based upon that comprehensive development plan, staff does recommend express approval, especially given that there are two smaller parcels that would likely be incapable of additional development without being uh added on to or included in additional development. I'd like to point out that the commissioners should have received via email, uh, a letter of support from the mayor and council for this express approval. Um, they have, they have annexed the land, and I believe it's still within that forty-five-day waiting period. However, um, they do support this. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, um, and any discussion.
Commissioners, thoughts, comments, questions for Jill, Mr. Cross?
For Jill, uh, the town.
Yes.
Since all that additional land had already been voted on and approved for annexation, did these two parcels, or did these two parcels have like a public hearing through them or anything like that?
Yes, this went through another separate annexation process whereby there was a public hearing.
And then, then you're looking here now for the information on the opposition.
Um, Mr. Cross, do you, I can't recall. I don't think there was.
Mr. Baker, good afternoon. For the record, I'm Daniel Cross. I'm the owner of Cloverly Hill LLC. Are we still putting addresses in the record?
Yes.
Um, fifty-three oh-one Bucy's Town Pike, Frederick, Maryland, two-one-seven-zero-four. Uh, Mr. Baker, uh, recollect that although I own the Cloverly Farm Lane roadbed itself, and I owned the corner, and then by action of the Governor's Board of Public Works in twenty eighteen, I acquired the surplus right-of-way. The town back under Mayor Myers had always asked me to try to annex the whole corner to bring along these five homeowners. In twenty fourteen, Jason actually worked with them in detail, and we got them to sign on to an annexation agreement, but the pound of flesh they wanted from the town was not satisfactory to the town. So I was kind of getting carte blanche, proceed to the annexation you last saw, which was the twenty eighteen annexation of the vast majority of the parcel. And then as these homeowners have retired, offered their property to sale for me, I have bought them. So that was the purpose of this most recent annexation. The vote was four zero in the Smithsburg Town Council, and there was no opposition recorded in the record for that town council meeting.
They said there was an advertisement for pu- public participation and all that?
It duly advertised and duly posted on the property.
That's all I know.
Uh, indeed, twice, sir, um, because we had a thirty-day hiatus between what should have been a hearing and then the hearing happening. So two notices in the paper, two postings on the property.
So, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, based on that information, and uh, I didn't support the original annexation.
I'm aware of that, sir.
Based on that, and uh, that satisfies my uh, my thoughts as to moving forward today with this project and the annexation out, so.
Mr. Baker, I've got to tell you, that's a great relief to me.
Mr. Baker, you want to make that a motion, or the?
Well, I think Randy had a question.
Hey, Randy?
No, you know what? Just go ahead and make the motion.
Yeah, so, well, do you have any other questions? Okay, uh, you're based on all the information provided and uh, based on the public hearing with uh, no comments, no opposition, uh, I'll make the motion to support the recommendation it stated.
Very good. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Uh, first and a second to approve. Is there to grant? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Didn't even have to get to my, to my speech. Glad to be back. Look forward to seeing you again whenever we next need to.
I saw the first hand out there that you provided today, and I probably much answered all my questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your patience and time. All right, I believe next up is the application for zoning ma- amendment for Frank and Catherine Murray. Joe Baker, welcome back. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Uh, good morning again. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. Uh, I am here today to present to you a request for a full termination of a rural business floating zone on property located at one-four-zero-two-five Green Castle Pike. Um, this would be, uh, with the removal of this, it would then revert back to the underlying zoning of Rural Village. Um, regulations regarding the application and removal of floating zone districts are different than those that we typically look at with Euclidean zones. Um, instead of following the change or mistake rule, um, we simply bring forward the request uh, and why they are requesting the removal of the zone, and then the commissioners uh may make a decision without public hearing uh, and with a planning commission review and recommendation. Um, this request was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Washington County Planning Commission at their regular meeting on March second, uh, twenty twenty-one. The applicant's letter and an exhibit has been provided to you, along with the staff report in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Jill, uh, so basically they just want to make it a residential?
Yes, they want to remove the commercial element of the zoning and revert back to residential.
Commissioners, I'm very familiar with this. I actually, a long time ago, headed for sale. It's, it's, it's a challenge for commercial uh, with septic and, you know, there's, there's not enough room to put big septic, and these are just some of the old that you could develop out in, uh, so many people in there today, so uh, I'm very familiar with it. I'd motion to uh, accept that.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second for discussion? There's a second.
I, I'll support this as well, just out of curiosity. Randy, you might know, was this used as a, a car lot at one time for like antique cars?
I don't believe it. Was it an auction house? It was a church, a flea market? I don't think, I, I don't recall.
I remember some antique cars there at one time. Maybe it was, they were up for auction.
Maybe just a day event or something.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, I have first and a second. Um, is there a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye. I mean, excuse me. There's first and a second. All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next up will be the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Allison Harris-Hartthorn. Allison, good morning. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning, commissioners. Allison Hartthorn, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management. Um, this morning, I'm here seeking the approval of the submission of the FY twenty-two Community Partnership Agreement proposal to the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention, Youth, and Victim Services, requesting six hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and accept the funding as awarded. Um, on behalf and as the direction of the local management board, the Office of Grant Management requests the approval to submit an, a proposal requesting funding for six programs impacting the well-being of children, youth, and families in Washington County. youth and families in Washington County, as well as support the county administrative expenses. I have a breakdown of the funding requested by the local management board includes the following programmatic strategies and the respective vendors. Family Center Support Services with the Department of Social Services for seventy-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. School-Based Mental Health Services, provided by Brooklyn Health Services, two-hundred-and-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Disconnected Youth Program Enhancements, Western Maryland Consortium, sixty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. The Family Strong Program, Potomac Case Management Services, eighty-one-thousand-and-twenty dollars. True Opportunities Program, also Potomac Case Management Service, excuse me, Potomac Management Services, eighty-one-thousand-twenty dollars. And the Local Care Team Coordinator, Praxis Access LLC, fifty-four thousand. And last but not least, the Office of Grant Management Administrative Expenses, a hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. The fiscal impact for the county, well, it will provide a hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars to the Office of Grant Management. Any questions?
You want us to approve the submission and the acceptance?
Approve the submission and accept the, yeah.
Commissioners, comments, thoughts?
I have a question, Allison.
Sure.
Out of curiosity, the grant will provide one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Most of the, for us to administer the grant, most of the organizations aren't even receiving that much. Why, why is our expense so high? Could that money better?
Um, I could get back to you on, I could find out exactly why, why we ask exactly that amount. I think there is a certain percentage that we get out of the grant money that we are provided. The only one, the state gives us so much money, the only one that's not in that is the Local Care Team Coordinator. We ask above and beyond that. So they give us a set amount and then we break it down that way. And that's how the, the board goes with it, and they have approved it that way. But I can look back and find out if there's a exact breakdown.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant application and accept what is funded.
There's a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Black Rock Golf Course. Andrew Eichman, if you're listening, come on in.
He's out there.
Gentlemen, good morning. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Andrew Eichman, Director of Public Works.
Dave Brooks, Park Supervisor.
We're here before you this morning, seeking a recommended motion to combine the current grill cook, grade-four positions, and the restaurant server, grade-one positions, into a combined grill cook and server, grade-one position at the Black Rock Golf Course. The grill cook is a position that's located at the Black Rock Golf Course and primary job responsibilities include preparing and serving food in the clubhouse. The server position was a position that delivers the food and mostly runs the beverage cart out on the course, but that position has not been utilized for, for years. Currently, we have three part-time grill cooks and four part-time restaurant server positions, and we're proposing to combine those into seven part-time grill cook slash server positions to create a flexible pool of employees to cover the operating hours. The job responsibilities and grade have been reviewed with respect to similar jobs and this adjustment's proposed. I'll note, since April two thousand twenty, due to COVID restrictions, the Black Rock Kitchen has been scaled down and we currently don't have anyone employed as a grill cook or a restaurant server. So there'd be no employees affected by the proposed change. We have done some food service and this was prepared and sold by our grade-one pro shop workers and the golf course manager. Normally, the grill cooks double as the servers, and so they do receive tips. And so when factoring in their grade-four base pay and tips, the equivalent hourly rate is significantly higher than the job responsibilities and comparable positions, not only at Black Rock, but also when we look at positions like at the Marty Snook Pool. And so we're, we're recommending that as we hire grill cooks and servers reopen the kitchen, that they focus on good customer service and tips should be factored in as part of the compensation. And as we said last week, we're in here talking about part-time wages. Once the minimum wage rises to fifteen dollars an hour, potentially the grill cook position on an hourly rate would proportionally increase more than other positions, creating even more disparity. So we're recommending that this adjustment happen now before we advertise and hire employees for the position.
And I would add that the board out at Black Rock liked the, liked the proposal from our last meeting last week.
Dave can answer any questions on how the operation would actually work, but that's the overall concept of what we'd like to do.
Motion to approve is presented.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Highway and Water Quality Departments, Andrew Eichman, Mark Bradshaw. Please introduce yourself in the matter. Welcome back, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew Eichman, Director of Public Works.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environment Management.
We're here before you to seek a recommended motion to approve the execution of an amendment to the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, between the Board of County Commissioners and the Maryland Public Employees Council sixty-seven ASME, AFL-CIO in its local two-six-seven-seven, AFL-CIO to Article twenty-two, which is the posting of jobs internally for the affected departments. The current MOU states that job openings within the bargaining unit only shall be posted or advertised internally within county government for a period of five business days prior to being advertised outside of county government. Such job openings will be advertised externally only if no qualified internal candidate applies during the referenced five-day period and is thereafter selected for the job opening. So that's the direct quote. So this in combination with transfer requests results in hiring delays and duplication of advertisements for entry-level positions. And the county has come to an agreement with ASME to streamline the hiring and transfer process that still maintains the internal hiring preference for higher-grade positions. So basically, what we're talking about example here is, say, in Highway Department, position opens up in Keyesville. That's an entry-level position. It gets advertised internally. Somebody from Central may decide they want to move there. They go through, they, they take that position. Now we have a position that opens up in Central. Process repeats. And it takes a long time to work through all those steps to where we actually have people coming onboard to fill those positions. So this is an effort to, we worked with the union to kind of streamline that. So transfers can happen more expeditiously and we can have a pool of external candidates to fill wherever the remaining opening spot is within county Highway Department. And then we looked at water quality as well for Mark's entry-level positions. Does Mark, you? An example of how that would be on your side?
The union, Employees Council, they've been involved in the process and they approve it?
Yes, we had, I think, bimonthly meetings, and so this was something we talked about, the hiring process. Carol Braun?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Here's a first. There's a second.
A second.
No first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Next up, Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-two Water Quality Budget. Welcome back, Mr. Bradshaw. Introduce yourself in the matter. I believe Sarah's joining. Sarah's joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management.
And good morning, Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer.
We're here today to go over the budget for water quality. The Water Quality Fund includes the Utility Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, and Pretreatment Fund. Something important to keep in mind related to these funds is that they share employees and therefore wages and benefits are allocated based on prior year between the funds. First, we'll go through the Utility Fund, which provides supportive services to water and sewer operations of the Water Quality Department. Services provided include administration, laboratory testing, maintenance of vehicles, and utility facilities. A budget increase of four-hundred-one-thousand dollars, of which three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars is related to wages and benefits, fifty-three-thousand related to operational costs, mainly as a result of a lease program for mini excavator, software, court contracts, liability, insurance, and utility. Capital outlay, outlay decreased by seventeen thousand, which represents less funding dedicated to capital projects than last year. Next, we'll talk about the Stormwater Management and Watershed Department. Budgeted at four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty dollars saw the largest increase due to new positions for the MS four compliance. This department is fully supported by the General Fund and not supported by water and sewer rates as duties and functions of the department could be housed under the General Fund as they are in other jurisdictions. The Clean County Department budget at two-hundred-and-three-thousand is supported through stormwater retrofit projects in an effort to meet the need of the NPDES permit in most effective manner. Do you have any questions on the Utility Funds? Okay, next we'll talk about the Water Fund. The Water Fund increased by seventy-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars, of which forty-eight thousand is related to wages and benefits, twenty-eight thousand related to higher operational costs, mainly as a result of increasing the amount of funding being transferred to the Utility Fund. Supplying material maintenance also increased by seventy-five-hundred dollars. The Water Fund continues to face an operational shortage and will require a General Fund subsidy of a hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. This shortage includes an assumption rate of three-and-a-half percent increase.
And Commissioners, just to interject, the Water Fund summary starts on sixteen-dash-one in your packet that you have? Just in case you're looking for that.
What's, what was that number?
Sixteen-dash-one.
Sixteen?
Sixteen-dash-one.
Yeah, it gets tough with eight-hundred pages here, but.
It's a lot of documentation.
I'm just kidding.
If no rate, rate increases approved, the General Fund subsidy will be higher than previously stated. We have also included top fee increase for twenty-two to be raised from twenty-five-hundred dollars to twenty-seven-hundred dollars. Also, we have looked at operational efficiencies to try to decrease the costs associated with the Water Fund. Couple of those projects are, we connect the Cascade Water System into the High Field Water System. So now the High Field Water System supplies all the water to Cascade Tarn Center, which reduced us from having to operate separate water treatment systems. We're also looking at drilling a well down in the Schartsburg area. We've been in contact with the town. The town owns the property there at the Ball Fields. They actually drilled a well several years ago and it has very good production rate. And the town has agreed to allow us the possibility of drilling a well down there, too.
There's a, pardon me, there's a high cost to drawing water off the river for treatment down there. Is that correct?
Yeah, surf, surface water has a higher operational cost than groundwater.
And eventually, doing the well would lower that cost. Is that, would that be a good?
That is the idea that we're pursuing, that it would lower operational costs associated with the Schartsburg Water System if we can drill this well and it produces.
One well, maybe two wells, or wait to see?
Wait and see. Like I said, the well they drilled was very productive. I think it was fifty, sixty gallons a minute's yield. We are planning on going down and sampling that water and determining what the quality is, because that would have a direct impact on the treatment processes, too. So we've been in contact with Russ Weaver, who's now the mayor, and we will be going down here very shortly to pull those samples and analyze them. And if everything checks out, then we will probably be contacting the town about actually getting permission to drill well on their property.
Thank you.
And they're extremely excited about this project down there in the Schartsburg community?
Uh, Mr. Weaver?
Yes, indeed.
Keeps emailing me, wanting to know when I'm coming back.
I think he wants you to drill three wells.
And that, that's going to help cut the cost of the water cost to the citizens in Schartsburg. Do you have an idea of the range of cost reduction?
Not yet. We haven't explored it that far yet. Once we do the analysis of the water, then we will actually start doing some engineering cost analysis, what it's going to cost to drill the well, what it will cost to, we'll have to put up like a little building, maybe a ten to ten.
But after the initial cost, that could be cost savings compared to ever-rising costs of treatment, the surface water.
And once, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Then we'll do all those cost analysis, and I'm sure, if you want, I can send them to you once I get everything compiled and we'll see what the upfront capital cost is, and then we'll look at the treatment cost and then ultimately a break-even analysis to determine whether we'd have to operate the well two years or three years to break even versus treating water from the river. So we are exploring that and we will continue to explore that option.
Would the well provide, be the exclusive water source for the town?
No, it would not be the exclusive. It would be a supplemental. I'd love to get a exclusive well that produces that kind of water, but, uh, right now, our treatment is around a hundred thousand gallons a day is the usage in Schartsburg. That would be a, a really good well if we could do it. I think their well is fifty gallons a minute, somewhere in that neighborhood. So we use the well as a supplement, maybe a third, a fourth, up to fifty percent, depending on what the actual well produces.
Thank you for that. Please continue.
Do you have any questions regarding the Water Fund? All right.
The Sewer Fund starts on seventeen-dash-one.
So back to the Water Fund, what are going to be the rate increase recommendations? Do you have any idea what they're going to be?
Yes.
We do. We can go over those now, or we can go over them at the end of the present.
You planned on going over them today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then just follow your agenda.
Wait to the end, okay? Thank you.
All right, next is Sewer Fund. Sewer Fund increased by seventy-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars, mainly due to increases in wages and benefits of forty-five-thousand dollars. A decrease in operational expenses of a hundred-and-eleven thousand, mainly due to debt service and an increase in CIP projects that require cash funding. Fund balance of six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand is being used to bridge the shortfall. The budget does include a three-and-a-half percent rate increase. Three-and-a-half percent generates additional three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars. We have also included a top fee increase of three-hundred dollars from sixty-nine-hundred to seventy-two-hundred. We would like to bring the commissioners' attention to the joint service agreement with the city of Hegristown for the Hegristown crossings, Waisel Boulevard area will be ending in approximately two years. The city plans to build out the improvements to their plant and take over their customers as full-service. Currently, the city of Hegristown pays the county a wholesale rate for the flow. Once the transfer to the city, a full-service customer sewer revenue will be reduced by approximately five-hundred-thousand dollars a year. This assumption has been added into the rate model projections. Any questions on the sewer?
I was saying, I was saying, that's, that's new information that we just received, right?
That is new information. As of last year, we had not assumed that in the rate model. We were not aware of the reduction in revenue.
City just recently announced that they were going to build out their infrastructure to do that.
That's correct.
So just, just so everybody knows, this is new. They've already adjusted, Aaron and Mark have already adjusted, and that's what we're talking about today.
That's right.
The last fund is the Pretreatment Fund. Pretreatment Fund was privatized in two thousand and six through a long-term lease. As a result, operational functions are no longer the responsibility of the Water Quality Department. This privatization allowed the county to maintain compliance with EPA regulations at a substantial saving. The cost in funds is debt service of four-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Lease payments are made in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand and the remainder is drawn from fund balance. Any questions regarding the pretreatment? Okay, now Sarah's turn to talk about the rates.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Water and sewer revenue requirements show that an increase in water and sewer revenue is necessary to facilitate the Department of Water Quality's long-range financial plans. The presented rate schedule that you have is based on this requirement. It is attached to the R. There is a, a rate sheet right before you get to the next agenda item, which is the airport budget. So if you skip to the end of your packet, you should be able to find the proposed rates.
What number would that be?
Be right after.
It is after.
Eighteen-five. Have to think, would be numbered, it's right after eighteen-five. Looks like this. Looks like this.
Thank you. Does everybody have the rate sheet? Find it, okay. So I'm going to go through the rate increases that are being proposed, um, and then I'll talk to you a little bit about the water quality rate model. For the water fund, or I guess we can start with sewer, sewers first, yep. For the sewer fund, we have a residential full service customer for the base rate increasing by two percent, which is two dollars and sixty-one cents. Commercial one by three and a half percent or four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Commercial two by three and a half percent or four dollars and seventy-six cents. Commercial three by three and a half percent or four dollars and seventy-six cents. Volunteer by one point three percent or one dollar and sixty-nine cents. And the collection service by three and a half percent or two dollars and ten cents. Keep in mind these base rates are for, um, quarterly, uh, billing. Um, in addition to that, we have increases related to the volume for residential full service. You'll see an eight percent, which is equal to point sixty. Commercial one, three and a half percent, twenty-nine cents. Commercial two, three and a half percent, thirty-three cents. Commercial three, three and a half percent, twenty-three cents. Volunteer, eight and a half percent and sixty-four cents. And the non-metered accounts at three and a half percent were six dollars and fourteen cents. Wholesale customers, three and a half percent or twenty-seven cents. Um, you probably were looking at the increase for residential full service under the volume charge for eight percent. I'd like to draw your attention to the bottom of the rate sheet where it has the charge for twelve thousand gallons per quarter for the average residential customer. This year, the rates that are being proposed are less for the base charge and more for the volume charge. This is in accordance with the rate model projections. And what this will do is it will, um, only increase those customers who use the base or less by two percent or two dollars and sixty-one cents. And those who use the average twelve thousand gallons would increase an overall three point five percent or six dollars and twenty-one cents. So overall, the rate increase being proposed is averaged at three and a half percent or six dollars and twenty-one cents. But if they use less than the six thousand gallons per quarter, they will not experience as large of an increase.
So you could assume maybe older residents who don't have a family.
On a fixed income.
Kids to bathe every night.
They generally only use the base, so they would only see a two dollars and sixty-one cents per quarter increase.
When you look at, I, I'm explaining what volunteer services.
Those are just related to our volunteer companies, um, and as you're aware, the county reimburses, um, those companies in full for their utility costs. Um, and so in a roundabout way, that cost does enter the county. What this is trying to do with the one point three percent increase for the base charge and the eight point five percent increase is align those rates with the residential rates because the rate model suggests that they should be the same. And so what we're trying to do here is an alignment of those rates.
When the volunteer services, the companies, even though they have an increase here, they're going to fund them back for what they're paid?
Yes, we reimburse those costs. Any other questions on sewer rates? Okay, we'll move.
Sarah? I'll wait until you're finished.
Okay. Um, water rates are structured very similarly. The residential full service, um, the proposed rate is one oh seven fifteen, which is a two point three percent increase or two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Commercial one is the three and a half percent increase or three dollars and sixty-seven cents of an increase. Commercial two, three and a half percent increase, four dollars and fifty-three cents. Volunteer, two point three percent or two dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then on the volume side, residential full service, five point three percent or sixty-two cents. Commercial one, three and a half percent or forty-two cents. Commercial two, three and a half percent or thirty-three cents and volunteer, four point nine percent or fifty-eight cents with the non-metered accounts at three and a half percent increase as well at six dollars and eleven cents. If you look to the bottom, you'll see the average twelve thousand gallons per quarter for, per av- average residential customer comes to the base charge of a two point three percent increase or two dollars and thirty-nine cents for those who use less than the six thousand and then for the average customer, the volume charge is increasing by five point three percent or three dollars and seventy-two cents. Overall, again, you see the three and a half percent increase at an average of six dollars and eleven cents per quarter. Based on rate model projections, rates, rates must increase in order to offset general fund contribution in the water fund and to get sewer back to a self-supported status. Currently expenditures do exceed revenues by a hundred eighty-seven thousand in the water fund and six hundred and twenty-six thousand in the sewer fund. Are there any questions on water rate increases or rates overall?
These go to public hearing, correct?
Yes, we are going to request today to advertise to take these rates to public hearing.
So on average, if somebody's on county water sewer, their rates are going to increase approximately a hundred dollars. You said these are based on quarters?
These are based on quarters, so if it's an average, average of six dollars a quarter for water and sewer.
Twelve bucks, that's forty-eight dollars.
Right, forty-eight.
Okay, about fifty bucks.
That's if you use the twelve thousand, but if you use less than that, it's, uh, two and two.
I just said average, I just.
Okay.
Sarah? This is helpful.
Yes, let me, let me just go over this. I'm sorry this was not attached to the R. What I, what I put in front of you were the, um, rate model projections um, for the ten-year plan for both the water and the sewer fund. So let's just take a look at the water utility at first. You'll see at the top, one is named water utility and one is named wastewater utility. So if we start with water utility and you look at the highlighted, um, figures, you're going to see for the ten years, an annual surplus or deficiency. So I just want to bring your attention to this because even with a three and a half percent increase per year for water, um, we do see a substantial increase or deficit, I guess, in the fund, which would increase the general fund contribution to that fund. So for instance, in twenty-two, it's around a hundred ninety thousand, in twenty-three, two hundred thousand. If you skip to twenty thirty-one, you're at four hundred and sixty-six thousand. So at this point, we are, um, exploring the options that Mark discussed to try to reduce this um, and to try to get it back to a self-supported status. I'm not sure, um, you know, we can't speak about it yet because we don't have the cost analysis done, but that is the hope. But in absence of a restructuring of how we're providing the water service, we will continue to see an increase and currently it's funded by the general fund. If you go to the next page, it's entitled wastewater utility. So this analysis set up the same way. You can see the annual surplus or deficiency, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two is around seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then from there, it increases to a deficit of about one point two million, but then you can see it decreases substantially. That decrease is directly related to the capacity management project and the additional customers that the county will receive from the completion of that project. The estimated revenue increase to the county is around one point three million, once that project is built out. Keep in mind, we will then have the offset from the reduction in revenue from the city of Hagerstown of the five hundred thousand, so.
That's factored in here as well?
That is factored in here this year. Last year, we were not aware of the five hundred thousand loss in revenue. Um, and so only the one point three million was factored in last year. So it, it is a hit to the rate model overall, uh, but it is factored in here. And you can see at the bottom, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can see at the bottom, um, the rate increases that are, um, utilized to create this projection. So if you change those rate increases, you will change the annual surplus or deficiency that is also up top. But what we tried to do was align these rate increases so that at the ten-year period, the target balance, which is the twenty-five percent, um, of operating and maintenance cost, which is around two point nine million, equals or is very close to the ending balance. And so if you look at year twenty thirty-one, you can see two point nine versus three million. It's very close. Um, and that's with a staggered and reduced rates later on. But you do see the three and a half percent rate increase as a potential increase for the next three years. Twenty-two, twenty-three, tw- four years, excuse me.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
I wonder, looking at your models, you're projecting and recommending a rather steady increase, um, consistent increase in both water and wastewater, forty bucks. Would it provide any benefit or stability to the system into the model? Prove the multi-year plan or is this actually considered only?
I actually think a multi-year plan would be really helpful. Um, it would, it would provide more guidance to staff and it would, um, it, it, I think it would be a good thing. The city of Hagerstown provides a multi-year plan and they have, um, they have approved increases on their end for, I think it's a five-year period, don't quote me, but, um, I think that would actually be very beneficial to the county.
I, I mean, I, I agree. I think that would be, as, as we try to plan for the next ten years.
Yes.
I think that would be, that would be a great thing, whether we do it this year.
Right.
Or whether we do it in future years, I think that would be, that would be helpful to, it'd be helpful to, to us, helpful to staff, but helpful to the citizens.
Yeah, know what they can plan for that. They know what's coming. I think it's a good idea.
I think what that would do, and this is just my opinion, I think that, what that would do, that would limit citizens' participation, citizen input. And I'm interested in citizens' input because you never know what, uh, they may have some valuable comments and valuable things to add, uh, as we decide this every year.
To follow up with, pardon interruptions, follow up with an agreement, would there be, uh, requirements for public hearings every year, you know, we do a multi-year plan? That's kind of where the input comes in, correct?
Yeah.
If we approve a three-year plan, would every year we'd also go to public hearing with the approval of that multi?
Because if times do, uh, get hard, I'm sure we're going to have to sit down and make some adjustments to this because we just can't keep adding more and more cost. I understand their users and stuff. But for me, I'd like to give direction and say, hey, get your budget cut to this amount. And the way we're going, that we just keep automatically just increasing the cost to the customers and that eliminates a lot of, uh, work on our staff's part to try to get these costs reduced. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up with Terry there. We can still do a multi-year plan. That doesn't mean we approve it, correct? We still can do projections, correct, but every year we come back with a public hearing.
That's what we're going here.
Yes, but, um, I have another question too, unless someone.
I, I mean, I, I was, I was just, I was just going to say that I think that, uh, I think you would, that's what you started to say and we'll go back to that, but, you know, I think there are ways you could do it. You could adopt a multi-year rate structure or you could at least come up with, uh, you know, some thoughts about it, you know, if you're going to do it every year. Uh, and, and I'll just say this, I think that, I mean, our staff, we've already been talking about, we, we will, we are continuing to look how to ca- how to cut costs, so, how to do it better.
And in the past twelve months, we have, um, reduced the staffing at water and sewer, um, by several positions which had an impact of about a five hundred thousand dollar savings to the fund. So we are reducing staffing where possible to make adjustments.
So we'll, I mean, we'll continue to do that, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I, I want to go back and I want to steal Commissioner Wagner's favorite quote in a hundred words or less. Review the five hundred thousand dollar loss of revenue so the average person who's listening right now can understand what that really means, uh, please.
We currently have a joint service agreement with the city of Hagerstown. The city of Hagerstown, um, pays the county at this wholesale rate that you see in the rate structure for the flow of those customers. In about two years, the city of Hagerstown has a plan to build out their.
Pump station.
Pump station, um, and so that they can take those customers.
Is that called the north end flow agreement or is that the nickname to that?
It's a different agreement.
No, this is flow transfer agreement.
Okay, thank you, pardon the interruption.
Flow transfer agreement.
And so in about two years, once their pump station has been upgraded, they will take those customer, customers on full service and so they will no, no longer need to pay the county for the flow. And they pay us approximately four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars annually for that wholesale that will now be diverted to their full service customers. The county won't get the revenue.
So that agreement's being renegotiated or is that agreement in then?
That agreement's already existed. It has a sunset clause in it of August of twenty-three. Um, but we are reviewing the JSA and it will be incorporated into the new agreement with the condition that they can take their flow back at a later date when their station is completed.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. And do we have approval to take these rates to public hearing or to advertise for public hearing?
Commissioners move it to public hearing? Yeah, I see. Nice. Thank you very much.
Public hearing, that'll be virtual or are we going to be?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're still talking about how we're going to do public hearings moving forward.
There should be some sort of public, uh, input on a virtual, whatever.
Last year when we did the public hearing, we allowed it open for seven days for public comment to come in in a variety of ways.
Is there enough time to put a notice on utility statements for citizens to know that it's, it's a little different this year?
Um.
For rate users.
We could, but the way that those utility statements go out, all customers are on a different schedule, so it probably wouldn't reach all of our customers. Um, we may want to focus on, um, Facebook and, um.
Or media, whatever we use.
Right, we, we, we'll work with, we'll work with PR in our departments to get out the word, you know, all the different ways we can do. We can, we probably can't do it on the notices, I probably hear what you're saying, but.
Right.
On the rate notice, but whatever other way we can do, uh, including we can continue to discuss it here. But yeah, social media and we can issue releases, however, however else we can do that, so we can go with the end goal.
Yeah, I just know if we did that, it wouldn't reach everyone because of the billing cycle. And I'd have to talk to staff about how long it would take to get that set up because it's a process in the system, but.
The rate increases last year.
I'm, I'm sorry, Terry, what?
The rate increases last year.
What were they? Is that what you're asking? Zero percent for water. Water was not increased last year and it was three and a half average for sewer.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, thank you folks.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to the next agenda item. Will be the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Hagerstown Regional Airport Budget. Garrison, welcome. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning commissioners. Uh, my name is Garrison Plasner, Director of the Hagerstown Regional Airport. Uh, wanted to come before you today, uh, to discuss the, uh, airport budget for FY twenty twenty-two. Um, a little report in brief is the Hagerstown Regional Airport contributes to the economic base of Washington County by providing and supporting air transportation needs to the quad state area in accordance to the FAA regulations, state and county laws. The airport budget is just over two million dollars and the airport fund is, uh, self-supported and does not require uh, general fund subsidy for FY twenty twenty-two. The budget increase, um, this year was forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety, which is right around two point nine percent. Um, that increase is mainly due to the two and a half step, uh, increase as well as the one percent cola. Um, if you look in the, the packet, uh, that we give, um, on the agenda, uh, some of our expenses, um, include general operations, airfield operations, business parks, terminals, tea hangar, uh, fuel farm operations, rental properties, uh, airport rescue firefighting services and airline services. Uh, the majority of our revenue, um, on the airport comes from, uh, rent for corporate, um, hangars as well as tea hangars, uh, and landing fees and things like that. Um, do I have any, uh, questions?
Commissioners, thoughts?
Good job.
Short and sweet.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Terry, no more questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Like Randy likes, at a hundred words or less.
That's, boy, that was a good one here.
Yes, it was.
I actually counted Sarah's. She had a hundred and ten. All right, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda, Washington County Free Library Budget. Uh, please have the director or executive director of the library come in. You brought the big guns with you, Al Mart, and there we go. Welcome, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please introduce yourself in the, and your guest in the matter, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Jenny Bakers. I'm the Executive Director of the Washington County Free Library. With me today, I have Stephen Shutey. He's our, uh, Board President. Thank you for having me.
Is this your first visit in front of us?
It is my first visit. The last time.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I, the last time, um, I had just started, it was. Yeah, I, the last time, I had just started, it was about four months into my employment that COVID hit.
And you brought COVID here.
Yes, I did, I did, I'm so sorry, but. So this is my first time I'm able to get here in person, so it's nice to see everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Jenny Bakers, I'm the executive director of the Washington County Free Library. I appreciate the time you're taking to learn about what your library means to the community. Okay, so I'm going to ask whoever's doing the slides, you can just go ahead and press through the entire timeline. There we go, okay, just for the sake of time. So this is a timeline of what our twenty twenty and our early twenty twenty-one has looked like. In early twenty twenty, we started monitoring the COVID nineteen situation, just like everybody else in the world, and on March thirteenth, we made a decision based on discussions with the state and other library leadership to close our library to the public on March thirteenth. Immediately after that closure, we were all still working, and we began working on a reopening plan framework that was actually used as the model for other libraries in the state of Maryland. We began doing our curbside pickup in all of our locations on June first, and throughout June, it was a very, very popular service, and we actually had not stopped doing that program since June. It's still a very popular program. In July, we continued our regular summer reading program through virtual formats and storytimes and everything, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. In August, our patrons began, we began preparing for our patrons to return, and in September, our library branches did reopen. We worked really closely with the Washington County Health Department and the Maryland Department of Health to make sure we were all on track and opening in a safe way. In October and November, it was all very popular, people were really excited to be back, but unfortunately, due to some increased numbers of community of community spread and under the recommendation of our local health department, we returned just to curbside pickup only. December and January, we worked hard to continue the curbside pickup, our phone reference, and actually, as of last month, February sixteenth, we were go ahead, we were cleared to go ahead and reopen, and we were actually the first library in the state of Maryland to reopen this calendar year, which is something we're very proud of. So, thank you. And you can see a few staff members here. I always like to tell stories with pictures, so you can see a few staff members here doing what they do best, assisting the community even in times of hardship. So you can see some of our STEM kits that we were doing and our staff picking out books for them. So customers are placing holds by visiting the online catalog or calling the branch library. Then they schedule an appointment to pick up those materials at their preferred locations. In June twenty twenty alone, our Fletcher Branch Library downtown had over twelve hundred curbside pickups at their at that location. Customers are able to speak with library staff at all branches about their research needs, homework help, tech assistance, information about local services and more. And in fact, we had a demand for curbside printing services, so customers that needed to print out homework for school, research, resumes, could actually come up to our doors, print things out for free, and we can hand it to them through safe methods. As you can see in this picture here, this is just one of the many days of curbside pickup. You can see it's multiple items generally in most orders. Thank you. So over seven hundred, oh, I'm sorry, the Bookmobile typically visits senior care and retirement communities, daycares and Head Start programs, and other stops throughout the county on a regular basis. In twenty twenty, Bookmobile staff identified customers that could not access curbside pickup services and made deliveries directly to people's homes. Over seven hundred and thirty-five community members registered for library cards during the building closures. W C P S students continue using their rail cards to check out materials using curbside pickup and access e-library materials and databases. And community members were excited to learn that branch library Wi-Fi connections were available outside of most of the buildings. Our Fletcher library staff worked with Antietam Cable to create a hotspot in the parking lot for families and individuals to use completely for free. Virtual programs played a major role in how we communicated with our patrons this year. We moved our interactive storytimes online, provided free concert performances, writing workshops, and more. The Maryland State Library presented their operating budget summary to the General Assembly recently. This included information about e-library materials like ebooks, e-audiobooks, digital magazines, and more. The total number of digital materials owned by Maryland libraries, and just to clarify, the way that digital materials work in the state of Maryland is we all purchase those materials together and it's open for the entire state. So the total number of materials owned by the libraries together increased by over one million items in fiscal twenty to three point six million items. The number of digital materials accessed at Maryland libraries also grew in fiscal twenty to seventeen point six million items. In Washington County, we have a service called Hoopla. That service increased in usage by fifty percent in F Y nineteen to twenty, and in F Y twenty-one so far, we've seen an average increase of fifty-two percent. Use of Brainfuse, which is an online resource for students that is free tutoring and it's live for them, it increased by six hundred and thirty-two point five percent from fiscal nineteen to twenty, and in seventy-four point five percent this fiscal year. New patron sign-ons to Libby by Overdrive, which is another twenty-four-seven e-library service, increased by two hundred and sixty-seven percent in March of twenty twenty. That positive trend has continued with new sign-ons increasing by a hundred and thirty-five percent overall from fiscal year twenty to twenty-one so far. Through strategic partnerships with our other community stakeholders, your library continues to support Washington County through rapid changes with local with the goal of shared access. This year, we worked closely with the Health Department of Washington County as we created our phased reopening plan. We worked with the Discovery Station, the Hub at U S M H, the Judy Center of Washington County to offer weekly storytimes on social media. And our young adult department downtown were closely with partners at the hospice of Washington County for a grief group grief group that meets regularly. This summer, they developed a grief walk with signs that travel throughout the county to guide walks with information to provide healthy grieving practices during such a difficult time. So your library by the numbers. Right now, we're sitting at around seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen active borrowers, which is about fifty-three percent of county residents residents are registered library users. We're looking at around seven hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-two borrowed items. Two hundred, or two twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifteen program attendees and three hundred and sixty-six questions answered every day at your libraries for a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight questions.
It's a lot of questions.
It's a lot of questions.
I need, I need.
And that's year-round, that's every day. Yes, that is.
And I guess today, boy, it more to that total.
Absolutely. That's something we love, it's something we love. So I like to provide, I like to provide you an analysis of our return on investment. So you can see here, we're using a retail value calculator to estimate the value of services offered by the library, and you can see that the community benefits are right around twenty-four million dollars, and that's interlibrary loans, materials, database searches, study room usage that we provide for free to a lot of users. Return on investment, so every dollar spent on library services by Washington County, the community receives approximately four dollars and eighty-four cents worth of services. So looking ahead, our usage was up prior to the shutdown. For example, at downtown teen programs during eight months before we we were open to the public was up a hundred and twenty percents from from the first eight months of the previous year. Our children's programs, system-wide, are up about a hundred and fifty percent from the previous year. And our Hancock Library, which is our newest facility, the gate count of customers entering the building was ninety-four percent higher than the previous year, which is something we're very proud of. We also have to consider the impact of recent state bills on the library budget, especially the recent passing of a bill for libraries statewide to make children's cards fine-free as of this month. We continue to look forward to a tradition of modern, beautiful spaces in this community, and we are also looking forward to bringing back in-person programs, meeting room rentals, public trainings, and and beyond as soon as it's safe to do so. So in fiscal year twenty-two, we are asking for three million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, and this is, this increase is comprised of a two percent cost of living increase for staff and to support a one-time I T infrastructure upgrade. I didn't go into it too much into this program, but the library does provide a lot of I T support to both the county and the city of Hagerstown. Thank you so much, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just had two quick ones, more curiosity.
Sure.
Brainfuse, that's a tutoring service?
Yes, sir.
So if I was a student and wanted to tutor in geometry, could I come online and and what would the average fee for that be?
It's totally free for the customer. It's a program that we have through our Western Maryland Regional Library, and yeah, that's exactly what you would do, is you'd sign up and you'd have a live teacher, a certified teacher, working with you through your your program and your project.
It's a good service, I didn't.
It is an amazing service, and we get a lot of fantastic feedback on it. And it was something we worked with the schools. When shutdown happened, we were constantly talking to them to to link us together, and that program's actually listed on their website as a resource.
No, I, that's good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Commissioners, any other thoughts? That makes three hundred and thirty-seven questions.
No.
Say I was listening.
That's pretty good, that's pretty good, thank you.
Hearing none, I'll, we thank you, any other, hearing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much for your support in the past, and I think you can see, we really have a wonderful library, a good curriculum, and a county for our citizens, and we look forward to getting back to more normal times, and we we do miss having you all come into the library so you can see in part some of these great things Jenny carried with you today and next.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing that concludes our agenda items, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion going closed.
Second.
I have a first and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Off the.